Good evening, everyone. It is September 14th and I'll call the meeting of our town council of order. If we could please take a moment of silence to acknowledge all those that do and have served, enabling each and every one of us voting privileges, freedom and safety. Thank you all. To comply with mass general law, I'm announcing tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, please identify yourself.
I do not see anybody.
Thanks, Don. This meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of our open meeting law. Janie, do we have anyone signed up for public comments this evening?
No one has signed up.
Council comments? Ralph?
Mike, I just wanted to say that the 9/11 ceremony, tribute ceremony, that the fire department put on, the candlelight vigil was absolutely fantastic. It was nice to see so many residents come out for it. I greatly appreciate our fire department continuing the tradition and I was very blessed to be able to say a few words there. So they did a wonderful job and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thanks, Ralph. Mary, I usually ask if you have a manager's report and I've been doing it for about a year and you always have a report, so could you please take it away?
Sure. No, I don't have one tonight, Mike. I don't want to read at you. I know you've all had an opportunity to take a look at this, so I'll just, I'll put the highlights. Major concern in the last month or so has been, you know, some personnel shifting and turnover. We've had a lot of resignations or job changes. Jordy, a lot of the administrative personnel, we lost our planning admin, we lost an assessor's office admin. I guess the elephant in the room is we lost our health inspector, we've lost our health director. We have, many of these resignations are due to personal reasons. In one case, it was childcare. In another case, it was a better opportunity in someone's hometown. Donna Bowman is going to be working in North Hampton, much closer to where she lives and with a staff of four additional health inspectors versus her solitary role here. So we've also lost Carl Wilson from IT, who was a great technician and he's been replaced. Ryan has already backfilled that position. So we just have a lot of transition going on and a lot of moving parts. So I want to assure you and the members of the public that we will, we have plans in place. We've already posted for a health director, we've posted the health inspector position. We think we're going to have the assessor's role filled soon. So plans are in the works to address these vacancies, including those on the Board of Health. I already have received an application from a physician in the community who's interested in serving. So it'll be a little bit rough sledding for a bit, but we'll get there and I have full confidence that we will continue with our successful service of the public's needs. And that is based on what I say in the third paragraph of my report. That is that the town department heads over the period of time that I've worked for East Long Meadow continue to impress me every single day with their dedication and their hard work. You know, it's not just their expertise and their competence, but their attitude by and large is commendable and very affirming to me as the town manager. I never get any complaints about, you know, I don't want to do that, or that's too difficult, or why me? I just get thumbs up, figuratively speaking, or literally at times, and cooperation. So I'm extremely grateful for that and our department heads and the staff that work with them are really deserving of much praise. So I'm pleased to be able to report that again. The, just so you know what's going on, our, you know, summertime is vacation season and we all try to get away for some period of time, but I wanted to highlight in particular two departments in the busyness that they have in the summer months. Primarily, the finance department, as I say in my report, the, we're reviewing the first quarter operations of the fiscal year, completing all the necessary closeout documentation necessary to close fiscal 21. The auditors arrived in town today to do the annual audit. We begin our preparations for our anticipated budget issues for the coming year. We start talking about the tax recap, about how to get certified free cash as quickly as possible. And in addition to all those responsibilities, I've asked Steve to work with Deb in my office and Karen to consolidate and centralize all of our grant applications, both past, present and future. So in addition to those tasks, there's also all the reporting for MEMA and FEMA and the COVID and the ARPA. So they have plenty to do and they're all working very hard at that. So I just want you to know, it may look like everything's just a smooth operation and it is for the most part, but there's an awful lot going on behind the scenes that takes a great deal of time and effort. In addition to finance, Ryan's department, the information technology with the opening of the school year, has done tremendous work as they do every, every August and September. I highlight there some of the investments that you authorized under our capital program. We've purchased these desktops and Chromebooks and distributed them to school administrative staff. Elementary school teachers have all received laptops in the summer. The paras have been issued Chromebooks. And with the turnover of employees, there's also all these tickets that get sent to IT to create new identities, new passwords, new devices to be prepared for new employees, the rescission of access and so forth for those who have left our employees. So there's an awful lot going there, going on there too. And additionally, I've tasked Ryan with trying to expedite our upgrading of our payroll and technology systems for time off. And he and Mary Race are working very hard on that issue. So in addition to that, the core network that broke down, as you may recall, a couple of months ago, the parts and equipment have been delivered. And then one of the engineers that was working with the vendor, I guess either resigned or isn't available. So the configuration of that new network equipment has been delayed a tad, but it'll be done before much longer. Recreation, of course, I could go on and on about what they do. They have their usual series of events throughout September. Briefly, I want to touch on the veterans district. We did receive an oral affirmation that the state Veterans Office is going to give the district a waiver for the balance of fiscal 22 so that we can address the myriad issues that pertain to staffing, payroll, organization, administration, all budget issues. My concern was whether or not East Long Meadow should stay in the district or if we should perhaps consider withdrawing from the district and flying solo to service our veterans. But in light of the fact that the Commonwealth is going to give us this period of nine months to straighten things out and we've committed to the budget process and staying with the district at least for the short term, I think that's the route we're going to go. We also now have some physical problems. I don't know if any of the council has been over to the COA building and ever observed the, the office in which the veteran service officer provides the service, but it's kind of, it's not kind of, it is unacceptable. So I was over at the COA building today and I talked to our new director about commandeering some additional space in that building to manufacture a more suitable office space for our new veterans officer. So Bruce, Fenny and Joe will be with me soon to try to figure out where Michelle can perform her duties. Right now, she's in what is effectively a closet and some of the veterans who've come to see her are in wheelchairs and they have difficulty accessing the threshold into that room. There's really no room for her to be comfortable and, you know, the veterans themselves, as well as Michelle, deserve an environment that is more suitable to the work that they're doing and the needs that they have. So I'm just asking the public to be patient. I have received a very pleasing telephone call from Brian Kennedy, who was asked to be a part of the solution here and I do appreciate his willingness and his interest in that subject matter. So we're working diligently to try to find solutions that are acceptable and proper and we will, we will get there. The other board, as you know, that the town is a member of, is the Westcom district. We met last two Fridays ago and really the key information there is just that the design of the old former Gold Club Salter College is underway and we've sent out a request for qualifications for the architect to move forward with the necessary renovations that were identified in the initial study. So that's going to be a work in progress for a while, but we are getting the state's attention. On the 28th of September, there's going to be a meeting of the statewide EOPS personnel and the state 911. So that's at 11 o'clock on that Tuesday morning and hopefully we'll get some, some further affirmation about their continued financial support for the district. The negotiations with the police union will be discussed briefly in the executive session later on. The feasibility study, excuse me, for the police station, it has been completed and I'm told by Chief Williams that the drawings are with the architect and we're waiting a price proposal. So certainly share that with you when I get it. Still waiting for a response on the town's contract offers to the administrative personnel unions, one of them anyway. Negotiations are ongoing with the professional unit of that demographic. Karen Corpinan has begun assisting Bethany Yao with a couple of very significant events or activities. Karen has some experience from her time with the Springfield Housing Authority and grants management. So in addition to working on the centralization of those grants, I've asked her to work with Bethany to coordinate an open house that we'll have later on in October to comply with some of the suggestions of the master plan, namely the master plan implementation plan, as well as a citizens academy. There is a series of tasks that are suggested to be the town manager's responsibility in the master plan. So we want to follow up on those and capitalize, hopefully, on the energy within the community that was present during the focus groups and then the effort that was put out for the master plan itself. And lastly, second to the last, we've done a lot of work with John Torscha. My office, Debbie House, has worked very hard working on a community preservation plan. We had some templates from the state website that we were able to draw from and that draft plan, I believe, is under review with the committee and will be available soon. It's quite comprehensive and it's a lot of effort that went into it. So I think you'll be happy when we finally have a product. And I did appoint Andrea Driscoll to the historical commission. She, I interviewed her last week. She and her husband run a photography company and she said that her interest in the historical thing with, connected to the photography would be that, you know, hopefully they could take some nice pictures for preservation of some of the town's resources and assets. So that's what I have for you up to now.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone have any questions for Mary? Pat?
Yes, hi, Mary. I'm interested in what Karen's job title is.
Deputy Town Manager.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question of Mike.
Go ahead, Pat.
That would be, didn't the council clearly indicate they did not want the title of Deputy Town Manager for that position because it was a part-time job and didn't, isn't that, since that job's not in the charter, we knew nothing about it. And so we have an informal agreement that for a position like Deputy Town Manager, which is very, very important, at least in appearance, that we're supposed to become notified of that ahead of time or did I miss something, Mike?
I would defer back to Financial Oversight Committee and I see Kathy's hand in the audience in the background here. But Kathy, do you, do you have, have the, that submittal in front of you?
Thank you, Mike. I don't have the submittal in front of me, but for the rest of my colleague counselors, if you go back to Jim Broderick's May 25 financial report where he presented as part of the public hearing, the whole budget package for FY '22, under the line item for Town Manager, we approved a $35,000 line item for a position to be named at the pleasure of the manager. So the fact that we approved it inherently or tacitly, we've given the nod, I feel, to the, to the manager's office to add that position. I personally don't feel it's under our purview to select the name of the position. That's outside the bounds of our responsibilities, but that's my own particular opinion. But nonetheless, Finance Committee recommended and we approved that allocation. And so I'm, I'm not of the opinion that as a council, we need to have any other action as it regards to naming that position and/or how the hours of the individual are structured. The bottom line is during FY '22, the maximum salary limit is $35,000.
Thanks, Kathy. Tom?
Mike, I have that in front of me. And in regards to the comments that Kathy made, the decision that was made and submitted by the Financial Oversight Committee that was approved by the council states, "We've left unchanged the town manager's budget number 122, which includes $35,000 for a trial manager, project manager, grants manager position, period." Our recommendation regarding position, not the title, but the title that we were referencing was project manager, grants manager. And I personally had a conversation with Mary over that and as well as the Finance Committee and we were not in support of a Deputy Town Manager position.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I guess my concern with the Deputy Town Manager position was I was led to believe that the council executive committee felt that it was a dangerous title to use because of a legal thing called apparent authority. When Karen makes a decision or gives an order or requires something, it's, since it's not described in the charter as to what a Deputy Town Manager is, if I were a department head, I would be wondering, is this, is she operating on her own authority or is she really standing in for Mary and only representing Mary's authority? And the apparent authority is very interesting because Mary would be aware of this. In Springfield, Peter Picnelli wanted to redo the apartment buildings of Court Square and he went to the city treasurer to seek an abatement on the past taxes because he said, "I can't pay those back taxes and still redo this." And the city treasurer gave him an abatement, signed it, sealed and delivered. And Peter started work and somebody said, "Hey, he doesn't have the authority to do that." Well, Peter said, "What are you talking about?" He says, "City treasurer, of course he has the authority." They said, "No, actually he doesn't." And so those buildings are still empty today, 20 years later, because of a confusion over apparent authority. And it, it strikes me that the job that Karen is doing is more special projects, coordination, and the title Deputy Town Manager could lead people astray.
I'll make a comment at this point. I would think that what I would want to see would be job description. I think job description would pull a tremendous amount more weight than, than a specific title. So if that was defined and the proper measures were there, I would feel that the town would be protected in that capacity. And I don't believe that a job description has been created at this point in time. I'm trying to follow around the room. Marilyn, I saw your hand up?
No, I didn't have my hand up, but I was agreeing that the job description would certainly direct the actions of the, of the new hire, of Karen. So I have no, I have no problem with the title. I think what's expected of her is what Mary lays out in the job description.
Thanks. Kathy?
I wanted to speak back to Pat's comment regarding the fact that a Deputy Town Manager position is not listed in the charter, but somewhat analogous to this is the, the charter speaks about a hiring a superintendent of public works. It doesn't talk about a deputy superintendent of public works yet. We have one because Mr. Fenny, who is our superintendent of the DPW, came before the council and certainly previously to Mary, to suggest that the workload and the scope of all of their responsibilities warranted a deputy superintendent and it's, it was approved. And again, that's not in the charter. So I think we restrict our manager if we continue to say XYZ position is not listed in the charter because as we know, and as we're told many times, a number of jobs that weren't, didn't even exist when we were younger or 10 years ago are now very present in, in our working economy. So there may come a time where we have to create a position to fill a specific need with a specific title yet to be known. And somehow that's not regarded in the charter and I don't know that it needs to be. So I just wanted to make that analogy to the DPW. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Tom?
Mike, I would respectfully disagree with Kathy because the town manager's position is the position that the council hires and the council represents the residents of our town as regards to that. A Deputy Town Manager, who does that person report to? That person reports to the town manager. And in the charter, it states that the town manager at any point can temporarily appoint someone in their absence. And we have 45 days to say, "No, we don't agree with that" and remove that person and put someone in that we agree with. Well, how do we do that in this situation? Again, I'm going back to the facts. The facts are that the council approved $35,000 for a trial project manager, grants manager position, period. It's written in the minutes.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. The question was raised about the job description. I would point out that the person's job description is not typically sent around and given to all the department heads so they know exactly who they're dealing with. The job position is basically between the hiring manager and the personnel office and the, and the person themselves. What is, and it has nothing to do with apparent authority. Again, my concern is with apparent authority. The title Deputy Manager implies clearly a great deal of authority that people will have to search the job description to find out what it is. And if there is no job description, then she's operating at this point, no one knows really what authority she has, except the term seems to imply an awful lot of authority.
Well, I will remind everyone as well that there were, you know, conversations at the Financial Oversight Committee and we also asked for a succession plan. And I believe that succession plan coincides with what, what, what the job description of this individual is capable of. And the position right now that we're talking about is 18 hours a week. Tom?
Again, I'm going back to the basis that we did not approve Deputy Manager's position. We approved in funding a projects manager, grants manager position, period. Again, period. We did not agree to a Deputy Town Manager position. I'll just stick into the facts. That's what we approved in the budget.
Kathy?
To Tom's remark, I can recall during those Finance Committee, Subcommittee meetings that we did have some discussion about what to call the position, but we also understood as a Subcommittee that we were giving it a generic title of sorts at the time, but, and I remember Jim Broderick saying this, he was not married to a particular title, but he had to name it something so that it was a placeholder in the description as we funded these positions.
Yeah. Okay. Well, not all of us were at every one of those meetings. So it's a little bit difficult tonight recalling exactly what took place or in terms of phraseology without being at that specific meeting. Tom?
Mike, I mean, I was on the Finance Oversight Committee as well as Kathy and I agree, we did have those conversations and some of them were fairly lengthy and it was very clear that we were recommending $35,000 for a trial project manager slash grants manager position, period. Now, if I can read some more, it says, "Our recommendation is regarding the position, not the title," but those are the two titles that we were approving. In addition to that, it says, "We assume that that will be worked out to everyone's satisfaction." And that was approved by the full council. So I never heard anything on this.
Mike, may I say something?
Absolutely.
Look, we can refer this matter out to outside council. If you want to debate it all night, that's fine. I think as the town manager, I have the right to designate and hire whom I choose. I wrote a four-page memorandum and discussed it at length with the Finance Oversight about a succession plan, as someone, I think Mike just mentioned, and the duties that that person would assist me with. And contrary to Mike, there is in fact a job description of several pages in length and the woman is responsible to me and only me and she does exactly what I ask her to do, which for the time being is to assist our planning department in the implementation of the master plan, as I articulated in my report. You can go on all night if you want about this and, you know, Karen is watching this meeting and this is her first exposure to our town council. And if you want to beat up the manager because you don't like the name that was given, I don't think I'm bound by what you want to call a particular job. I could call her Town Manager, Dog Collector, Dog Catcher. I could call her anything I want under the charter. The charter authorizes me in Article III to delegate responsibility and to be a supervisory person for any matter within my jurisdiction. So if you want to relitigate and spend a half an hour talking about an 18-hour-a-week job, that the oversight that the oversight committee and your council president and officers encouraged me to request and go right ahead, but I'm going to check out of the meeting pretty soon because I'm tired of this. And that's all I have to say. We have a job description, she has duties, she works 18 hours a week. She has, to your point, Pat, about apparent authority, that's a legal concept that she will not. She's not going to incur it because she's not out in the community making decisions or telling department heads what to do. She comes to my office on the three days a week that she works and says, how can I help today? And I give her specific assignments. And that's the way it's going to be in the hopes that she can grow into it or somebody else in the town staff can grow into it, which was the argument I made back in the spring about the need for this position. And the need for the position was deputy town manager because I have 18 direct reports and 17 boards and commissions. And I needed the assistance. And Mike at least saw that and advocated that I get some documentation together to try to get this position. So to rehash it now over what we call her is beyond me. So go ahead and keep on if that's the way you want to do it. But I'm going to be leaving the meeting very shortly.
In terms of point of order, this isn't marked as an agenda item. And we certainly can get a legal opinion and we can talk about it at a further point in time. So I'd like to end the conversation based on the town manager's report and move on to approval of our minutes.
I would just say, Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt, but with all the issues that are facing the town of East Long Meadow right now, to spend a half an hour talking about someone's job title is beyond sublime.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session meetings from our August meeting.
I move to approve the August 10th, 2021 open session minutes.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
abstain.
Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
We're within the time parameters of our open meeting or public hearing. And I believe it's, sorry about the clock here, but like I said, it's 6:33. We have a public hearing scheduled for 6:15. I'm going to open that public hearing. This is a continued public hearing for a required second reading for a proposed zoning bylaw adding a cottage food operation exemption. The council members tonight are, I'm Mike Kane, to my right is Connor O'Shea, Kathy Hill, Pat Henry, Marilyn Richards, Tom O'Connor, and Ralph Page. Jean, could you leave the legal notice into the record, please?
Sure. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 10, 2021 at 6:15 PM via Zoom webinar for the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws by adding under the schedule of uses, section 3.090 accessory uses, new item quote I cottage food operation exemption, end quote. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public on the town's website. For the council, Jean Quagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thanks, Jeanie. Ralph, would you be able to read the bylaw into the record?
I will give it a shot, Mike. I'm actually looking at it on the other computer. So what we have is under, let's see if there's a heading. The purposes, for the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws by adding under schedule of uses, section 3.090 accessory uses, new item I cottage food operation exemption. It was recommended by the town of East Long Meadow Planning Board. And so if you go through the actual chart, you will find under section 3.090, it now reads home office, studio, or cottage industry. Under description, under A, it now reads a waiver of site plan approval for a private home office, studio, or cottage industry. The or cottage industry has been added. And then I'm scrolling down to item number I. It says cottage food operation exemption. A cottage food operation is allowed as a home occupation subject to all the conditions listed herein under this section 3.090, provided the resident operator is issued and maintains a valid residential kitchen permit from the East Long Meadow Board of Health and complies with the requirements imposed by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Regulations promulgated at 105 CMR 590.
All right, thank you. In this case, the planning board is the applicant. And I'm not sure if anyone's in the audience from the planning board. But if not, the reasons for the rationale for this proposed amendment were discussed at the last meeting. Don, are you, are you listening to me?
I am. Yep. I don't see anybody from the board in the audience.
Okay, thanks, Don. At this time, the public will now have, be able to offer any input. And I would just ask any speakers if they could kindly state their names and address and address only the council and be specific as possible. Anyone in the audience, Don?
No raised hands.
Okay, I will close the public input portion of the public hearing. And any comments from the council? Hearing and seeing none, would make a motion to close the public hearing. That will be followed by a vote from the council. Would somebody like to formally make that motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you both. And we'll roll call vote. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom? Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I'll entertain a motion regarding the public hearing to approve the zoning bylaw amended.
I motion to approve the zoning bylaw amendment adding new item I cottage food operation exemption to schedule of uses, section 3.090 accessory uses contingent upon compliance with the Board of Health.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. This is a roll call vote as well. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you all. I jumped ahead a little bit here. I just want to cover communications and correspondence and announcements. There weren't any tonight. And we'll be back on schedule here with number nine orders of the day under licensing matters. So the first item is to approve the change of manager for the 99. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to change, to approve the change of manager for the 99 Restaurant and Pub at 390 North Main Street to Sheila Martone.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'll start with Ralph.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We move to number two, under Orders of the Day, approval of change of officer for the 99 Restaurant. I'll entertain a motion.
Mike, I motion to approve the change of officer for 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Ralph and Tom. Any further discussion? We'll start with myself. I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. Next order of business, approval of a one-day liquor license for the Norcross House. Motion, please.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the bridal shower at the Norcross House on October 9, 2021, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion regarding that event? We'll start again. Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Connor?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion of an annual liquor license fees and pouring permit. And they're number four. But that would, I believe that would lie under the purview of the LLA. Is there any discussion that are questions, anyone might, okay, I'm seeing Ralph here now. Ralph?
Mike, I'll jump in. I'm in the process of creating the bylaw for the licensing of what we actually have. Kathy had sent it to me and all, and with all truthfulness, I just didn't get it to you guys in time. So I will be sending that over within the next 24 hours for review so that we can look. Because as we know in the charter, it says all fees will be done under a bylaw. And that was my whole point the last meeting is that we can't create a pouring permit without a bylaw. I do believe there's been some talks as far as what the cost of that permit will be. But again, I'll get this information over to everyone. And I apologize, Jeanie, I should have had it to you already.
Thank you, Ralph. Right below that, discussion of the Norcross House events and a one-day liquor license. I did have some conversations with Jeanie about that. Jeanie, did you want to mention anything?
Yes, so the Norcross House is starting to have a number of events at their place where alcohol would like to be served. And this could be anywhere from a large wedding, maybe 80, 90, 100 people, to a 10-person book group or shower. And I know that Donna Martinez, who represents the Norcross House, had talked to Kathy Hill in the past about maybe talking about how they can, you know, do they have to get a one-day liquor license for their venue every time they have something and have a tip-certified person? So Kathy, I think you have more information on that, or you talked with Donna?
Yes, thank you. And Mike, Donna is in the audience and at some point it might be beneficial to bring her into the conversation if you choose. The conundrum with the Norcross House is, is that it's a nonprofit. The entity of the Friends of the Norcross owns the house as well as the Carriage House. Adjacent to that is the small historical society building that the town owns. And that's just a very brief history of who's on first, if you will. Now that the Friends of the Norcross have spent some funds of their own as well as funds from the Community Preservation Committee, they have an interest in marketing the use of the Carriage House because it provides a nice opportunity for smaller groups to have any number of types of events there. A bridal shower, a baby shower, the book club, a child's birthday party, small kind of low-key events. Because the, given the the size of the place, this is not an environment that is going to beg the attendance of 200-plus people. The, as of, here's where I think the conundrum is. We just finished approving a one-day liquor license for a bridal shower coming up in a few weeks. It turns out that a member who will be in attendance, either a host of the bridal shower or some other individual that will be in attendance happens to be tip-certified. So that meets the requirements of our current one-day liquor license. That was the same situation back in September when we approved a small group wedding ceremony there over Labor Day weekend. Someone within the the group itself who was going to be in attendance was also tip-certified. The scenario or the question up tonight is what do you do? How do you advise a nonprofit such as the Friends when they market that their place, their hall is available? And a group of 15 or 18 people come forward and it's a very low-key situation where perhaps some champagne may be served, like a book club perhaps. No one on the Friends of the Norcross governing board is tip-certified. And there's never a guarantee that anyone in the the crowd of that, of the event will be tip-certified either. We've just gotten lucky in these last two events that I spoke about, spoken about, that somebody was by happenstance tip-certified. And that is the question that, or the dilemma that the Friends are encountering right now. They're trying their very best to generate some funds to sustain the activities as well as the well-being of the property. And marketing this very nice space is a perfect way to do it. But when the issue of alcohol comes up, so too does the issue of who is going to be the tip-certified individual. Marilyn, I, excuse me, Mike, Marilyn and I have spoken about this a little with Donna over the past week, just to try to get ready for this conversation. And she, Marilyn, may have some more to offer to that, again, as well as Donna herself.
Okay, Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. I have the distinct privilege of having been involved with the Norcross House from its inception in terms of acquiring or designating it as a historic structure and then moving forward to today. I have in front of me the Historic Preservation Restriction Agreement, which was written in 2009 and it's recorded in the Registry of Deeds. I also have a memorandum of understanding, which basically works with the Friends of the Norcross in terms of what they can and cannot do with the property. We don't own the Norcross. Actually, the museum house, which is next to the Norcross, is sitting on a parcel of land that had originally belonged to the Norcross. And through some unique negotiations, the land was divided into two parcels. We moved the museum house from its location closer to the center of town to parcel number one, made that town property, but parcel number two is the Norcross House. And it's governed by their, the Friends of the Norcross. The town has, basically, based on these agreements, has, for all intents and purposes, write a first refusal. If the, if the Friends of the Norcross cease to exist, the property becomes ours. They do not have a town budget. They do not have a current constant income for anything. When the, when the house was designated a historic structure, it's a house. It's not a, it's not a hall for parties. It's a house. It's in the middle of the residential zone. So the kinds of activities that occur at this location are similar to the activities that we have in our own homes when we have a bridal shower. We serve wine. We, we might have a graduate We, we might have a graduation party. We might have a book club. I'm thinking or hoping that perhaps we could come up with some sort of a waiver, if you will. They, I believe they should apply for a one day liquor license whenever they plan to serve alcohol because it gives the town an opportunity to oversee what's going on. I would like to perhaps suggest that for events of 50 people or less, that based on the type of event that's being proposed, the town council could waive the need for a tip server. And I say based on the type of event that's proposed. If you're proposing a bridal shower, just like the one we dealt with tonight, that's serving a champagne punch, that's pretty reasonable, in my opinion, for the location. And a tip server is, is really, here again, in my opinion, not needed. However, if they're going to have a wine tasting, and alcohol is coming in from a third party, and they're going to be tasting a lot of beverages, then absolutely there needs to be a tip server. So I'm just throwing out that out there as an option. Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to remind everyone, both these topics were pointed discussion, really. There's no vote being taken tonight. And Kathy, I believe your committee will weigh on, weigh in on this, or revisit these, these subject matters at, at a relevant point in time.
Well, yeah, yes, Mike, we, the, our committee, the licensing subcommittee can certainly weigh in on it. Regardless of what we may come up with, it still falls to the seven of us to determine whether or not concepts such as what Maryland is suggesting is appropriate. Just as a point of information, as far as the capacity of the carriage house, I asked Donna earlier today, Donna Martinez, what would you guess for seating capacity? And she said, if you were doing a lecture by an individual, you could get 50 to 60 in there, but comfortably, she wouldn't want to go beyond 40. So in some ways, that improves the argument as it relates to, can we, could we see our way clear to a waiver? Could we see our way to amending the memorandum of understanding or expanding it to speak to this issue? I think the point of the discussion this evening is to hear what everyone else's thoughts is. And again, Ms. Martinez is in the audience for further clarification that we may not be hitting on.
Okay. Connor, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Mike. Just a question. Is the current requirement of having a tip certified server, is that just something that the town had always imposed, or was that something that the state dictates that we do?
I will defer that response because I don't know. To me, Jeannie is much more the guru on this.
Well, I don't know either, but that's called a permit under the state, but a lot of the power does fall into the local authority. And I believe the tip certification is something that, that was locally approved, as well as the aggregates for the liquor liability. So I believe that's something that was developed with the application. And I just wanted to add too, that the Norcross House does have liquor liability built into their general liability policy for the venue. So they, they have that in place. I think the only issue, like Kathy sings, is do you want the tip certified or not? Because we do have a current liquor liability policy on file for the Norcross House.
Thanks, Jeannie. Connor, do you have another question?
Yeah, great. So I think if, so long as we have the authority locally to modify that, then to me, just looking at our liquor license application there for the one day, I mean, we already asked them to fill out if people under 21 are going to be in attendance, and what type of activity and stuff it is. So I think if, if they already check off, know that it's only going to be people 21 or over, and if we ask, was it going to be inside or outside type of things? To me, I think it's fine to waive it. I think we need to require them to do that all the time.
Okay. Ralph?
Mike, I have a question, and if you don't mind, I'm going to pose it to Marilyn because she has the paperwork. With the memorandum of understanding, is there a limit to how many functions can be done? If I was understanding correctly, the Norcross House was supposed to be run as a residential house, as if it was just simply a residential house. And if they're all of a sudden now going to be advertising to hold functions and all, then we, if we decide to, we would have to look at the memorandum of understanding to make necessary changes, which I'm not sure if the council would or not. I mean, that sounds like it could become more of a business venue. I mean, I know that my relatives' houses and all, they may have one or two functions a year. It sounds like this, between bridal showers and book reading and everything, that you could be talking a couple a month or more.
May I, Mike?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The memorandum of understanding speaks more to what they can do to the historic structure itself. When we went, when we finessed our way through the use of the Norcross, there were some initial opportunities that didn't bode well for its location, and that has since been addressed. The issue of it being a home in a residential zone, they are bound by basically residential zoning. However, there is the understanding that this is not a home, because it's not, no one's living there. It's a structure which has been basically designated for cultural use. Mostly, I mean, that's the goal, to have some sort of events that pertain to the culture of the town of the Saw Meadow. That being said, they have no income. They are all volunteers. There is no budget that supports this house, and the only thing that supports the house is the rental of these activities that are normally found in neighborhoods. You know, we even had, in my neighborhood, years back, we had a huge wedding with a tent. And they had the appropriate police, you know, for traffic control, that sort of thing. It's the same type of situation here. The activities are part and parcel to a home, a residence. The issue is, they have to rent. Otherwise, they don't get any money at all. And it's not a town, this came up with Pat Henry in a previous discussion with CPC. This is not a town building, so there's no town budget to support this building. So I hear what you're saying, but I think that if we say you're limited to three activities a year, we'll lose the Norcross House.
I just want to remind everybody that we do have two speakers in the audience, and if it's the council's pleasure to bring them in to elaborate on this conversation, then I'd be more than happy to do that. How do we feel? Would you like to hear from the, okay, thank you. Don?
Yep, they're on.
Maybe, I think it might be helpful if, if Donna elaborates on the conversation.
Okay, I'm here.
Hi, Donna.
Hi.
Thank you for standing by, and hopefully you've been following the dialogue, and, and anything you could add to that would be very helpful.
Sure. Um, the things that we have there are very small, and when you were talking about the capacity of the carriage house, we do have the capacity, if we were having, like, we have had speakers come in, and we've had people do, we had a ghost story night, and somebody came in and we told ghost stories, and we have, if we're having aisles of seats, we have the capacity to have about 60 people in there. That is not something that we would typically have any alcohol at or anything like that. For a wedding, if you're having a wedding in the carriage house, and you have, if you want to dance floor, you're probably limited to 40 people. If you wanted it to be cramped in there, you may be able to get 50 people, but that would be very cramped. Um, as far as the house goes, some of you have been in the house, and you know that even though it's a beautiful house, it's kind of segregated. It's, there's no huge open area. So, like, we did have a wedding in there, and it was, I think, 20 people, of which some people were children. And it was a very small thing. They rented it for like three hours on a Wednesday night. So that's the typical kind of thing that we're looking to rent. And the problem would be, like, we've had people call and say, for example, before COVID, we had, we were taking somebody through the house for some reason. And she said, oh, I'm part of a group of retired teachers from such and such a school, I forget what it is. And every year, we have a Christmas luncheon, and we have about nine people in our group, and we'd love to rent this out. And that would be great, and we would rent it out to them for a weekday for, you know, a few hours. Then if you add, okay, well, you have to get the liquor permit, and what do you have, are you having a bottle of wine or something? Well, yeah, we might have a bottle of wine. Well, then it, it becomes cost prohibitive for them to say, okay, well, now we got to do this, and we have to find somebody tip certified. Um, what we found is, if we have large groups, like the wedding that we had, which was only, I think, 50 people over Labor Day, they got their own insurance on top of ours. They got a bartender. They had a caterer. They hired a police officer. For somebody who's going to do a wedding in a place like that, it's very affordable for them to do that. They're still saving a lot of money as opposed to going to a big place. For somebody who might want to have a small party, it's cost prohibitive to say you have to pay for the place, and you have to get your own food, you know, you have to either get a caterer or get this or that, and then on top of all these things, now you have to find somebody that's tip certified, especially if it's a very small group, like 20, 25 people. Um, so, and as Marilyn and Kathleen have said, that's our only income at this point. And the house has been there now for 20 years. We have been able to get some CPC funds to make some preservation issues. We can't call it maintenance, but the preservation issues. But we have windows now that the seals have gone. And so we need to replace some windows. We need to do, we would like to keep the carriage house so that we can extend our season. Or put even ceiling fans in there, so people, when they rent in the warmer months, well, you know, it would at least be comfortable in there for them. But all these things obviously cost money, and if we're not renting the property or holding fundraisers, then we can't do any of this. And then the property is going to have to go back to the town because, you know, you can't let it fall into disrepair.
Thanks, guys. Does anyone have any questions for Donna? Donna, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And was there an additional speaker in the audience? Don?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so. I don't.
I just want to make sure, anybody that's standing by, if they wanted to speak, they weren't denied that opportunity. So there's no more questions at this point. This, this was, this was on the agenda for discussion purposes. Is there a different direction this council wants to move on this at this point in time? Does someone want to make a motion for a particular stance? Kathy?
In the interest of expediting this issue forward on behalf of the Norcross, rather than sending it to subcommittee, the conversation we would have at the subcommittee, and by the way, other than myself, Pat, and Tom, we have two additional members on that subcommittee. So 60% of us of that committee are here now. And I think we can accomplish just as much if we try to come to some understanding tonight. So let me see if I can spontaneously develop a motion. I move that the town council approve or allow for the waiver of tip certification on one day liquor licenses for the Norcross House, Friends of the Norcross.
I'll second that with.
I feel like it needs more. That's why I was pausing, but words aren't coming.
I was suggesting for a, for 50 people or less. I mean, if there were a larger event or a different type of event, that it still might require tip certification. Do you want to?
So Kathy, do you want to add?
Yes, I'll amend that. So.
Amend your motion to?
Yep, that the council approve a waiver of tip certification for one day liquor license requests for Friends of the Norcross. As long, with the stipulation that the the crowd cannot exceed 40 in number.
Second.
Okay. Now, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Hold on.
Mike, I'd like to amend that as well. I think it's important to note that since we did not get Devin an answer on whether or not a tip certified individual is necessary in the serving of alcohol, I think contingent on, we should add contingent upon the approval of council or the state. If they agree to this, I have no issue with it.
I would agree, I would agree to making that piece that Tom just said as part of the motion, and I think it makes good sense too. Because we solved our problem, right? If Jeff C. says you're good, then we've solved our problem without exacerbating the issue.
Right. Okay, so we have, we have a motion with a contingency. Modifying the motion. Marilyn, you're still, you're still in favor of that second?
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second. Now we can open up for discussion, unless somebody wants to tweak the motion again. Ralph?
So for discussion purposes, I have concern that we are picking out one entity to change rules and regulations for. I, I don't think we should be doing that. Obviously, they're a nonprofit. We have multiple nonprofits in town. I just, I have an issue with making adjustments for simply one entity. And I think the 40 people or 50 people, either way, that's a lot of people that could be there drinking. I mean, you know, if you're saying nine or 10 people, that's one thing. 40 people is a lot of people. Especially a lot of serving going to them. I, I just, I would not be for this. I just, especially not knowing whether or not this is required by the state, or if it's just town. I think we should find more information, get the additional information before we rush to a vote on it. I don't believe anything's that drastic right now that we have to take a vote tonight.
Okay, that, I'm going to let Pat go. Patrick?
Thank you, Mike. I, I agree with Ralph. I had not considered that we do have veterans of foreign wars, other veterans groups, churches, and others that could and would look to perhaps being treated similarly. And especially, I agree that while we might want to support this, we should really check first to see what the rules and ramifications are and the risks of waiving tip certification. And once we know that, then we can focus a little more directly.
So we do have options, and this Kathy and Marilyn, I don't know if you want to resend this and table this and have it, do our research. resend this and table this and have it, uh, do our research, uh, prior to our next council meeting?
Well, certainly I would be in favor of the research. Um, I think Jeannie is capable of ascertaining through the A B C C if, if tip certification is a local issue or i- if it's a state issue, then you know, to, to me that might end the discussion. But also for Jesse, our counsel, to look at this. Um, but I would like to, um, have that done sooner than later so that the, um, I mean, if we, we push this off two months, then as far as, um, Donna is concerned as she tries to market for income, you're into the middle of November and the odds that a small group is going to come forward with snow boots and coats on to sit in the carriage house is, uh, pretty, pretty slim. So to me, I think that their market is more seasonal and con- conducive to the months of, well, depending on Mother Nature, at least April to the first of November. So I wouldn't want to belabor this too terribly long.
Uh, how, how, how would, until our next council meeting, if we were able to do all the research and have those answers?
Well, at, yes, I, I could be, uh, do we anticipate having a second September meeting? Cause I would think if we did, or we were, two weeks is enough time for Jesse to weigh in on it. And certainly Jeannie can get an answer in twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Well, I, I certainly know we're, we will be having one in, in October. And I do know that there is conflicts with, um, us here tonight, um, which I'm, I'm not going to discuss, but people do have scheduling conflicts with a second meeting in September. So I would hope that the, the first council meeting in October would be able to accommodate their needs. Uh, but, um, you know, that being said, I'm, I'm gonna, Connor, I'm gonna get to you in one second. I would just think that if maybe if that motion was adjusted again, it could be, m- m- a motion could be on the floor to table this um, till our next council meeting and do our research. And if, if that worked within the time constraints of not burning the Norcross House, then that would be a possible direction. Connor?
Thanks, Mike. I guess I just wonder what additional research would we do that isn't already part of our contingent motion here? If it winds up not being allowed by the state, then I think we're covered. And aside from the question of singling out one nonprofit versus another, we could always make adjustments at our next meeting if we'd like to open it up to additional nonprofits. But I don't see how this hurts doing this today.
Okay. Marilyn?
I'm never afraid to, you know, dig for more information. Um, so I wouldn't, you know, be vehemently opposed. However, I have to agree somewhat with Connor in that this is our only historic house in East Long Meadow. It doesn't have a bar. It, it has a little tiny kitchen. You know, the, the churches have larger kitchens. They can, they can, um, um, provide services to larger groups. The ITAMS, the American Vet, the, at the, um, the Veterans Clubs, they all have bars. They actually have bartenders. And when there's a, an event at their locations, absolutely they need a one day liquor license and they need a tip server because the whole environment is very different. So I just think that, I understand Ralph, what you're saying. Um, you know, this is a, um, a, a really a special place for East Long Meadow in terms of our, um, historic, this historic home. And I want it to thrive and it can't thrive without dollars and cents. And the more we stall, the more we send it to committee, the less opportunity they have to do what they need to do to survive. So it's, it's, it sounds like a sob story, but it's true. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thanks. Kathy?
Um, thank you. I think it's a catch twenty-two for both the friends and the town. First for the friends, they need to generate income. Uh, they're very, um, committed to doing that. And I know, uh, from past circumstances, they also have worked collaboratively with the school department, either with specifically sharing information or providing speakers or students coming on, on site for a, you know, a class. Uh, so if we handcuff them with the tip certification requirement, it diminishes their ability to generate money and sustain themselves. The catch twenty-two for us is if they fail and the property and structures revert back to us, we own them, we have to do, we can't let them fall into disrepair. So then it's another property that the DPW has to maintain, plow the driveways. You get the picture. So I would be, I would agree with Marilyn that um, the longer this is delayed, um, the, the more, um, what's, I can't think of the right word.
Financial hardship.
Correct. I- in fairness, um, this came up, this topic came up when Donna and I, uh, ran into one another at the National Night Out and we started the conversation then. But at that point, it was too late to get it on the, uh, Aug- August tenth agenda. Otherwise we had already had this conversation and we would be five weeks removed and probably have our, a straight answer. So I would advocate to my colleagues that we should still move forward with the, the motion because it still requires us, as, as it's been amended, amended to get Jesse's uh, say so and nod and for Jeannie to clear it up with A B C C. And if we get a no from either one of them, well then we have to come back and, or work, you know, off to the side with the Norcross House until we can come up with something that meets, you know, rises to the law as well as helps, helps this organization in town.
Thanks. Um, Ralph, I'll be with you in one second. Pat, I saw your hand up earlier.
Thank you, Mike. I was just, I want to point out that we're going round and round about people talking about the Norcross's house need and the Norhouse, Cross's house problem and how much we could do to help them. But it, that, this isn't the issue. The issue is what are the facts? What are the risks? And so the investigation is the most important thing. If we move the question now, then we go back to Ralph's point. What about the churches? Small churches, small events? And, uh, I'm, I'm concerned if we had given this to the licensing committee, we would also have the input of two other people on the licensing committee and we, we might have had more information now. But at this point, I think we need to move to the facts.
Okay, Ralph?
So what I'm hearing is that this is utmost important. But then on the other hand, what I'm hearing is that the Norcross House has been operating for twenty years. Uh, what's changed in the last month that hasn't changed in twenty years? I know we've had the pandemic. I know there's issues. Um, but with all due respect, I don't think thirty days is that much to ask to have our town attorney weigh in on this, to have the state let us know. Um, it's a short period of time, especially when you consider that they've been operating as a whole for twenty years.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Okay, folks, with all due respect, I'm not going to like this answer, but the Donna is the new president. She's been the president for a year, a year and a half, and most of it's been COVID. Prior to that, there were other folks involved. The president has passed, the previous president has passed away. Um, I, I would ask to challenge how many liquor licenses you've actually gotten from the Norcross House over the last number of years for, for events that have taken place in the service of alcohol? I'll be honest with you. I sat on the couch in the Norcross House drinking a glass of wine. I wasn't a counselor at the time on more than one occasion, and I know that a liquor license has never been applied for. So let's not punish Donna for trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we do have a, a, a motion on the floor with an amendment with a second. So this is a roll call vote. And, uh, we'll, we'll start the, uh, voting with Marilyn.
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Pat?
No.
Tom? Muted. I'll come back to him. Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
And I'm a no as well. Thank you all.
Sorry, Donna. That's.
Okay. So if we, moving down the line here under old business, uh, recommendation of the Town Council Bylaw Review Committee for the adoption of the Stretch Energy Code Bylaw. Pat? Um, I believe, I believe you have some information for us on this subject matter?
Excuse me, Mike?
I believe we skipped.
Yeah, nine D.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on financial matters. Um, which is, um, motion to approve funding for the replacement or repair of the boiler in the Council of Aging Building. Uh, Connor's muted and I, I.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see my name next to it. I moved to approve a hundred twenty thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and fifty cents for the replacement of the boiler at the Council on Aging Building to be funded from free cash after free cash is certified.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ralph?
So Mike, um, being on, uh, the capital planning committee, um, if I remember correctly, this had come up, but it was lower on the priority. Um, and so that's why it wasn't funded. Um, from what I'm reading, it sounds like we had a failure of it. Um, I mean, is that, is that what happened? And that's why we need it right now? Um, like I said, I, I just know we, we dealt with it on capital and it was basically said that this isn't an emergency. It can go another year. Um, I believe it was, we put it under a number C and we funded all of As and Bs. Um, I'm not sure if Mary remembers or if Bruce or someone is here that can help with it.
I, I will, um, I'll ask Mary, but, um, at the time, uh, I, I remember being at that particular meeting, Ralph, and, and I believe you know, the urgency wasn't there, but I believe the situation has changed and I'll, I'll defer to Mary for uh, an update if she has one for us.
Um, I do, but I'd rather defer to Bruce and Joe Dunn, who are both in the audience, uh, for the detailed explanation. But there has been a failure. The alternative to funding the full replacement is approximately thirty thousand dollars to replace parts. Um, but I'll, uh, let Bruce and or Joe um, articulate further if you don't mind.
Okay. Uh, Don, would you please bring, uh, Bruce in?
Yeah, he's here, Mike.
Wow, that's dark.
I'm here. I actually lost the sunlight unfortunately.
You want to camp out?
No candles?
No, no candles. I have some lights on, but obviously it's, it's okay. Um, so yes, Ralph, you were correct. Uh, we had some catastrophic failures after our, uh, our capital meetings, um, took place. Uh, we had some leaks in April. I was notified from our facilities manager. And then after further investigation, once we shut down the heating system, we had our contractor come in, um, look at the system, found there was four additional cracked sections. So, um, given the, obviously the cost of replacing or repairing those um, for other sections in the boiler, um, like at a cost of thirty thousand eight hundred dollars, we decided to obviously give the council the option to go ahead with the capital request and doing a full replacement on the boiler.
All right. Thanks, Bruce.
Yep.
Uh, Connor?
Thanks, Mike. I think judging from our last meeting on the estimated turnbacks that Steve had provided us, I'd rather see us out of that almost two and a half million. Just replace it now and get it over and done with than try to patch things up just to have to replace it later on.
Thank you. Ralph?
Just to follow up, Bruce, is it a, a different type of heating system that we're now putting in? It sounds like it's two separate units instead of one large one?
Exactly. So the existing boiler now is a steam, uh, boiler. So that was, uh, original with the building. Um, obviously early nineties that was installed. Um, so what we have now in the, in the facility now, it's actually a steam boiler to a uh, heat exchange system that converts that heat into a hydronic, into our hydronic system that feeds all our air handling units. So therefore with the new two boilers, obviously we can use both of them at once or obviously during cold, uh, the colder months and or just one boiler based on the outdoor air temperatures at that facility. So we need to gain efficiency with the new boiler system. Um, and roughly fuel savings isn't that much per year, but it's roughly about two thousand dollars a year in savings. Um, and typically the fuel at that facility for natural gas, uh, depending on how cold it is that year is roughly between twelve to fourteen thousand dollars a year.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, Pat?
Uh, thank you, Mike. I would point out, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this replacement and, uh, for the school boiler. But I would point out that this is the kind of thing that the Financial Oversight Committee really needs to take a hard look at. Especially the items that are next year or the, or the following year, because this has happened before. They say, oh, well, we can wait, but we couldn't wait for the, um, the server, you know, the server crashed before we could reach it. Uh, sometimes trucks crash before we can reach it. And so I think the Financial Oversight Committee and uh, and Bruce particularly because he has most of the hard items, the, the capital items should look very hard at being too tight in controlling these expenses when we put ourselves in a position of suddenly emergencies. So, but I am in favor.
Thanks. I, I would just say, in my opinion, there's no upside in delaying this and I'm not in favor of throwing good money after bad. Um, we're, we're talking about, uh, when we were talking about the veterans too, I certainly want a, a comfortable environment in the building. It's bad enough. There's a lady working out of the closet. We certainly don't need her without any heat and hot water. So any other, any other comments, Tom?
Yeah, I'm in, um, I'm in favor of this as well as the replacement rather than the repair. But I don't see the quotes for the replacement. Um, I see in the documentation that at least I was provided, it shows a total budget price of a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and abatement of thirty thousand, which adds up to a hundred, hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight fifty. Uh, not one seventeen, three fifty. So I'm confused as to what the actual cost is.
Bruce, you got documents there?
Yes, absolutely. So the contractor, so, uh, Tom, you have to look at that, that total contractor price. So that hundred and eight thousand eight fifty, you have to subtract that thirty thousand dollars from that, the abatement. I have a separate quote for the abatement. So the contractor, uh, quote was seventy-eight thousand eight fifty. And then the quote I gave, uh, to Jeannie for the council for the abatement from abide was thirty-eight thousand five hundred. Okay? That gives us, well, yeah, baiting the thirty-five hundred. So that's one seventeen, three fifty. And then I put in a three percent contingency because I have to go out to bid for this. Um, so that brings us to one twenty-eight seventy point five zero. And I like to point out as well, after the project's complete, we'll probably roughly receive about eight thousand dollars back in energy rebates. So, but we need to obviously fund the whole project upfront and we'll probably get roughly about eight thousand dollars back.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, Mike, uh, I, I heard what Bruce, uh, just said, but it's not in the documentation that we received. Uh, again, I'm looking at a quote from Court Current and it's total budget price of a hundred and eight eight fifty and abatement allowance, which means in addition to a thirty thousand dollars. So I, I still don't know how we come up at one seventeen, three fifty. I like to say, yeah, let's fund this, but I want to know what the amount is we're funding.
Hey, Tom, if you look at your sheet, so if you look at the abatement line item, it says it's in the budget. So that thirty thousand dollars. Tom, if you look at your sheet, so if you look at the abatement line item, it says it's in the budget. So that thirty thousand dollar is already in that hundred and eight thousand eight fifty. So you got to subtract that from the, that hundred and eight, that thirty thousand. You got to take that out of the hundred and eight.
Right. But how did it come up at a hundred and seventeen?
No, you remove it. You, you subtract the thirty thousand from the hundred and eight eight fifty. That leaves you with the seventy eight thousand eight fifty.
That's correct. Yeah, I, I agree, Bruce, but it still says it's one seventeen three fifty is what you're requesting.
Yes. So if you look at the, there's another sheet that was given to, I believe, Genie for the abatement portion from abide, which costs thirty eight thousand five hundred. So if you take the seventy eight thousand eight fifty from Corcoran and then the abatement charge, which is thirty eight thousand five hundred, gives you a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand three fifty plus a three percent contingency gives you the a hundred and twenty thousand eight seventy fifty.
Okay. I, thank you. I understand it now, but it's very confusing the way presented.
Yeah, it, it is. It's, it's a lot, it's paperwork. I didn't want to subtract anything out of the contractors quotes or modify the documents in any way.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll, I'll start the vote with, uh, I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you all. Under financial matters, B two, motion to approve, uh, the six million seven eighty one thirty seven for prior years bills as presented.
Six million?
No, it's not six million.
Yeah, that's high.
What is it, a thousand?
No.
Motion to approve B two.
It's Tom.
I'm, I move to approve six thousand seven hundred and eighty one dollars and thirty seven cents for prior years bills as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, discussion. Pat?
I'm in favor of this, of course, but I am a little concerned about the thirty eight hundred and ninety five dollars uh, for the treasurer collector's office coming out of their next year's budget. That's a big number. Can I, can somebody reassure me that they're going to be able to within their budget, having taken that out?
Well, we asked Steve in the audience, uh, sitting right above you and take it away.
Now, sir, uh, we're, we're hopefully, it is a big number, but we're hoping with savings within the department that we'll be able to cover that. If not, at the end of the year, we'll probably, if we did need to, we'd come back and talk to you. But much like this year where we had a lot of turnbacks, we hope to cover it in that way if we had to. We're trying not to go into pre-cash.
Good luck.
Thank you. We'll try.
All right. Any other further discussion? Hearing and staying done. I mean, yes, on this one as well. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see. Okay. Under old business, recommendation of the town council bylaw committee for the adoption of the stretch energy code bylaw.
Yes, thank you, Mike. As I reported, as I reported last time, the bylaw subcommittee has met and discussed the council's request for a recommendation and adoption of the stretch energy building code, which is part, one part, part five of the Green Communities Program. I want to skip, you've all had a chance to read this, so I simply will move to the pros and cons because at our meeting, there were several multiple questions which were answered by the two energy department representatives who were in attendance on Zoom. And perceived advantages are that it makes new construction more energy efficient. Publicly demonstrates the town's desire to support green energy. No additional cost to the town. Builders like the idea of one code to meet. Applies only to new construction. And we can always rescind it if we find we don't like it, although it's unclear what that might entail. Suggested disadvantages were even if we do not adopt, nothing presents, uh, prevents builders and clients from agreeing to build to stretch requirements right now. There's some additional cost involved to the builder and to the client to build to the stretch code. Taxes on the new home may be slightly higher due to the features required by the stretch code. Takes away the rights of clients to build to existing still legal codes. By adopting, we have to agree to any future enhancements of the code automatically. There's no real financial incentive to the town. And there's some questions whether it would add cost to our proposed high school and police department construction. After all this discussion and a great deal of discussions, the subcommittee voted three to two to recommend adoption. The subcommittee reviewed and approved counselor pages draft of a proposed bylaw to adopt stretch energy and that proposal, proposed bylaw is attached. And if it's appropriate, we could read that before the, uh, hearing.
You, you want to hear, you want that read tonight, Pat? Is that what you're saying? Or do you want to save that and schedule, uh, a motion on a floor to hold a public hearing?
I thought we had a public hearing tonight, Mike. I apologize.
Okay.
If, if we don't have a public hearing, then it's just a matter of, does anyone here have questions? After having looked at the stretch energy code draft that Ralph provided that was thrown around to everybody.
Tom?
Thank you, Mike. In regards to the suggested disadvantages, uh, Pat mentioned by adopting this, we must agree to any future enhancements of the code. That language scares me. That language is basically a blank contract that the town is signing to say that whatever changes you make to it or additions or deletions, we have, we automatically are in on, in on it and we approve of it. I, I don't like signing blank contracts.
Connor?
Thanks, Mike. I think to my understanding though, the existing building code, not necessarily the stretch one, has also become enhanced and more stringent as time has come, but the town doesn't have the purview to accept or deny that. That's just something the state does on their own volition. So I think it would be the same with the stretch code as it would be with the existing code.
Kathy, I'm not sure. Do you have your hand up?
I do.
Okay.
To go back to Pat's point about, we have no idea whether or not should we be in the position of building a new high school? Would we be required to, uh, comply with the stretch energy code? Make no mistake, this MSBA is not going to give you ten cents on reimbursement. Uh, if you don't use the stretch energy code. In fact, I'd be surprised if it isn't already uh, assumed in the contracts that the school committee would be signing. And to Connor's point tangentially, uh, the state can, uh, as it relates to the MSBA project, they can tack on anything they want. One, once we've entered, we've already entered into that relationship with them. So whether there was discomfort, um, on the council or not, we would have to comply with what is the state wants in the energy code.
Thanks, Cap. Marilyn?
Mike, um, a number of years ago, the town addressed the issue of stretch code. And as a community, we voted, we voted it down. It was based on a lot of discussion from area builders who were concerned about the increased cost to Islam metal construction if they were required to utilize this code. That same builder from the group of builders was invited to one of the focus groups during the master plan, um, process that we recently, um, went through. And he indicated that, um, he supports the stretch code that, um, people are asking for it. I mean, it makes sense. If you're going to build a new home, you want to build it in the best energy efficient way possible. And while it may add some cost, this is new construction. It's not, um, the existing homes that are already in town. Nothing's going to happen to those. We're still going to have availability for housing for a variety of folk. But the developers are now in favor of it because they're doing it anyway.
Okay. If there's no more comments on, uh, on this subject matter, then I'll entertain a motion to move this toward a public hearing.
I move, motion to hold a public hearing on October 12th, 2021 at six fifteen PM to address the adoption of a stretch energy code bylaw.
I'll second.
And we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes as well. Thank you. So, um, down to new business update from town council bylaw committee regarding the adoption of the code.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Genie sent all this to all of you, so I hesitate to read the entire thing, even though it is useful to any one of the public who might be watching. Uh, so I'll just summarize that the bylaw committee of the town council met with the town clerk on August 25th to review the final, final draft materials from general code and determine the next steps to complete the project. General code gave us the final code in PDF format along with language to adopt and a redline version of all the changes we're making. The, the report, my report would say, number one, the committee is satisfied with the accuracy and completeness of the PDF of the new code. And with the completeness of the forty four page redline that was produced by general code to describe the changes and updates. Number two, the charter amendments approved by the voters in June require that any bylaws involving zoning must go to the planning board for two public hearings before the council can vote to adopt. So we recommend that the council vote today to refer the zoning changes in the new code to the planning board and take no other action on the code adoption until the planning board acts on the zoning changes and refers them back to us. Number three, the subcommittee agreed that the adoption wording as amended by Jesse seems to be consistent with the codification process that was described in the recent charter revisions. Specifically, the subcommittee considered the new language in the charter that was instituted just for the purpose of this recodification. That language reads, notwithstanding the above, the codification of town bylaws and related legislation commenced by the council before December 31st, 2021, along with any qualifying amendments to the proposed bylaws proposed as part of that process may be voted on as a single subject being proposed. The committee feels and recommends to the council that both the substantive and non-substantive char, changes can be combined as a single subject of adopting the new code. And Jesse's suggested modification to the adoption language, which you also saw in your, in your, uh, uh, in the documents that were attached for this meeting, made that clear. Number four is the subcommittee's understanding that Jesse is recommending the entire forty four page redline doc be read in its entirety during one of the hearings. The subcommittee is not supporting that recommendation, feeling that a shorter document summarizing the changes in a user friendly format would suffice for the reading as long as the forty four page redline has been available on the website for the required amount of time. And the charter as amended continues the requirement to publish the chart, the changes, of course, and hold two hearings before adoption. The subcommittee recommends the actual publication be limited just to the three page adoption document as amended by Jesse. Plus the summary document that we described. We feel that transparency is actually enhanced by a clear concise summary as opposed to a forty four page redline, as long as the redline is available on the town website for those who may wish to plow through it. So the, the subcommittee is now requesting of the council for the council to vote to refer the zoning bylaw changes to the planning board as required by the charter revisions recently adopted. For the council to vote that the adoption language in the summary document will suffice for reading at the public hearing when it is scheduled. And for the council to vote that the adoption language and the summary document together will suffice for publication in the reminder. Respectfully submitted by law subcommittee. And my thanks to all those people. And I'll open it for questions before we adopt the motions, I assume. Perfectly clear?
Marilyn?
Thank you, Mike. Um, thanks to your committee. Pat, um, it's an amazing, amazing project that you've been working on for a very long time. Um, I did not find anything to question regarding the, the actual, um, Latin bylaw changes within the schedule A, but I do have a comment on the adoption code, please. If you've got it in front of you, Pat, the very first paragraph addresses, um, the codification of the general and zoning bylaws. As you move further down into that paragraph, um, there's a sentence that starts, this bylaw and the code adopted hereby shall supersede and replace the nineteen eighty two bylaws. Now, the nineteen eighty two, based on my research, applies only to the general bylaws. The zoning bylaw was done in nineteen sixty two. And it's not, I'm not of the opinion that we are repealing those because there are sections of that bylaw, obviously, that are still in effect. So with that particular piece, could we clarify that by saying the nineteen eighty two general bylaws in that section? Because that would clarify what nineteen eighty few, eighty two references. And it's also, also on the next page, um, it references nineteen eighty two as well. Item B, where we could also say nineteen eighty two general bylaws. That would be my only suggestion.
Pat?
Mike, I would like to ask if Marilyn feels that the reference should be included in here to the, the nineteen sixty two bylaws, uh, zoning bylaws.
Yeah, what, what I'm struggling with is there have been, the, the nineteen sixty two bylaw has basically, um, transferred into this code without major substantive change. There were a few little tweaks here and there, but by and large, the, the bulk of the work was through the general bylaws. And nineteen sixty two is an important date because there's a whole section of the bylaw that references pre-existing non-conforming uses, lot sizes, which still exist in the town today. And I would hate to lose sight of that. And I don't know. I mean, maybe Ralph has an opinion on this, um, but but there weren't, you know, nineteen sixty two, I don't want to repeal what was done in nineteen sixty two, I don't think.
Pat?
I would certainly take that under advisement. I believe that if, I believe that general code merely was trying to go back and capture the former bylaws and state that the former bylaws are now being overs, overs, um, superseded by this. I think certainly we should also add any form of bylaws, especially the zoning bylaws. But it's not for us to do. It's for Jesse and, uh, general code and, uh, and Genie, I would think.
Marilyn?
I would add also that the nineteen sixty two bylaw with amendments then moved forward to the nineteen ninety one revision, which was really just a format change of the substance, you know, the substance nation previously documented. So, um, however it works out, I just wanted to raise the question that the nineteen eighty two didn't cover.
Yeah, no, very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ralph?
So Mike, I just want to point out, um, I believe because of the way E code's done this, all that
So Mike, I just want to point out, um, I believe because of the way E code's done this, all that language is still in the by law, the zoning bylaws that would now become, let's say we repealed that and we put these in, well, all that language is in there. That refers back to nineteen sixty two, refers to preexisting, nonconforming. So we don't lose any of the language. Um, so that way there, we don't lose any of the non conformity and stuff like that. Um, that was super important, and I know Jesse had taken a look at that specifically. Um, but again, I do understand what you're saying with the nineteen eighty two. It's a little confusing. I I wouldn't have any issue with getting a another opinion on it. And seeing what Jesse's thought is as far as, does that make a difference or not? But I think we can go forwards with this and do that when the public hearings and all come up. I would assume there's definitely going to be questions.
Pat.
Thanks, Mike. I just look on it as a technical correction of something that general code did not realize. And, you know, they didn't delve deep enough. And I'm sure that if Jesse were to look at it, he'd say, yeah, well, sure, we need to put in the nineteen sixty two code again as adopted and amended subsequently. So that, uh, so that it's clear to Ralph's point that none of that is lost. It's all superseded but included.
Thank you.
Sounds good. I'll I'll points well taken. Um, on on that note, I'll entertain a motion to refer to zoning.
I move to refer the zoning by law changes as referred to in schedule A to the planning board as required by the charter revisions recently adopted.
Second.
Here we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn? I think I believe that was a yes.
Yes.
There you go. And Ralph?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, we are down, still under new business, uh, in summary, action items for the next meeting.
Mike?
We have two more motions.
Two more motions.
Yeah, there's two more. So there was three as part of D one. So I'm going to jump into the second motion. Um, I motion to approve that the proposed adoption language and the summary document will suffice for reading at the public hearing for the adoption of the code.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on Ralph's motion. Any discussion? Uh, I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I move to approve that the proposed adoption language and the summary document together will suffice for publication in the reminder in preparation for the public hearing for the adoption of the code.
Second.
Okay, again, a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that wraps up everything under D one. Or, uh, under new business, I should say, excluding the, um, action items for the next meeting. Does anybody want to bring any for, uh, anything forward on action meetings, uh, action items for our next meeting? Ralph?
So Mike, as an action item, I will be supplying, um, the by law, the proposed, a proposed by law for the fees for the liquor licenses, including a pouring permit.
All right. Thank you for that. That, uh, pretty much wraps up our, um, open session, except for returning back an open session to uh, comply with the rest of our meeting. So I'll have them, uh, entertain a motion to leave open and move to executive.
I move to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for police union local four eight two. As an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And for a strategic session to discuss negotiations with non union personnel slash town managers compensation. We will then go back into open session.
Thank you. Uh, Kathy, you're muted.
I'm sorry. That was the silent second.
Okay, so motion in a second. Um, I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. Thanks, Don. Welcome back all. We are back in open session and I will entertain a motion. Uh, we don't have a motion uh, on paper right now, but if somebody would like to take a, a swing at it, a verse of, in in terms of her, uh, the compensation that was discussed.
I'll do it. I'll take a shot at it.
Thank you, Cap.
I move that the town council approve the, uh, contract year compensation package for town manager Mary McNally to include a five thousand dollar increase in her base salary. The inclusion of reimbursement for her monthly tel- cellphone bill and the increase in of two weeks in her vacation time making for a total of six weeks vacation annually.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call vote.
And Mike, I just want to clarify the
So I'm getting a little lapse here with the, uh, camera, but discussion I was starting.
Okay, so Mike, um, I just want to clarify, this is from, um, this past July through next June is, um, her compensation year. That's correct, right?
Yes, through June, June thirty one, if I recall correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, and that concludes our open session, so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
I will second that.
Um, I'm sure there's no discussion. Uh, I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
We are adjourned at eight thirty six. Don, thank you for all your help tonight and hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Don.
All right.
Good night.